Alright, so, welcome to the October 28th, 2015 ZBA meeting. Time o'clock, seven, so I think we're gonna get things started. We're gonna have, Lenny is going to sit in for, you're gonna sit in for Fran tonight?
Okay.
Alright, I'm glad you're on board with that. And then, what I will do is, I'll have, Tony, do you have the preamble?
Oh, I don't.
Alright, hold on a second. Yep, I'm gonna do the pledge in a minute. So anybody have a copy of the preamble on them?
I've got mine.
You have yours? Alright, so Tony, Lynn, could you lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, one unity, and justice for all.
Alright, Tony, if you would, read the preamble, please?
Let me see here. We will proceed with the petition in order. They are listed on the agenda unless the Board deems it appropriate to take a petition out of order. Before that, I gotta say good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I missed that one. State law and local ordinance set out the criteria that must be met in order for this Board to grant requests. The minimum requirements are outlined on the form provided by the Community Development Office, and a petitioner should proceed with this format to provide adequate justification for the Board to grant request. The Chair will then open the meeting to hear testimony either for or against the request. All decisions will be between the Speaker and the Board. Please be respectful for all and in interest of time refrain from repeating previous testimony. No new documentation will be accepted by the Board for consideration this evening, but the Board reserves the right to ask for additional testimony at any time. After the hearing, the facts from all parties regarding the petition, the Chairman will close the public hearing and the Board will deliberate and vote on requests before moving on to the next petition. Please turn all cell phones. And would those who plan to testify, please stand to be sworn in. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God?
So, so when you're called, we ask that you make sure that the mic is on and that you sign in before speaking. And the next ZBA meeting will be November 18th, 2015. As there are only four people on the Board tonight, it is my obligation to let you know that when hearing your case, you're gonna need to get at least three votes in positive for the case to be, for the motion to move forward, for the variance to move forward. If you, if it ends up in a two-two, two yes, two no, it is, it's denied. So you have the right, if you choose for a larger, when we have, because two of our members are out tonight, if you want to wait for a larger Board before proceeding, you're more than welcome to do that. You know, it's, and we can move, we can move your application forward. I just, but otherwise, if we hear it tonight and it doesn't pass, if it doesn't get more than three positive votes, it will be denied, so it's your option. Excellent. Alright, so, I'm gonna go right down the list. I gotta, I have to read them off, so I'll start with the first one. Tim Sullivan of Barlow Signs International, Inc., petitioner and KGB Ventures LLC owner, variance under section seventeen point one zero point four of the zoning ordinance to permit a hundred twenty-six point twenty-five square foot illuminated wall sign, whereas eighty-five point three square feet is allowed. The parcel is located at Fort Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial Aquafire District's tax map, three D lot zero zero three dash zero zero three dash zero two, case number 2015-37. I take it that's not you, the, oh, that is you, well, come on down. I'm sorry, yes, sorry about that. Come on down, sign in, make sure the light is bright green on your mics.
We're getting off of walls.
Yeah, and I would ask you to start with the five points.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for the record, my name is Tim Sullivan. I'm with Barlow Signs out of Hudson, New Hampshire.
Pat, can I, can I make a request?
Yes, ma'am.
Just, it's easier on me if you, can you give me a twenty-five word or less kind of overview as to what you're asking before you hit the five points?
Sure. We are seeking to, to, we are seeking relief for a larger wall sign that is allowed on the side of the building that faces Route Three slash Continental Avenue end of the building. That's a narrow end of the building, and that's where the majority of our clientele or patients will be traveling from. So we're seeking a larger sign for that end elevation. Was that under twenty-five?
We're just gonna ask a stop after each point, just for any discussion or questions.
Sure.
Thank you.
Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Our proposal will help the public easily identify their destination without, with minimal relief requested. The public benefits from an attractive two-scale signage.
Anybody? Lenny? Tony? Proceed.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the proposed sign will encourage the effective use of the signage to direct, advertise, and inform, and will in no way negatively affect adjacent properties.
One question, the sign you have there now, you're saying is not adequate? Your customers or your patients don't see it?
We don't have a sign there.
Oh, you don't have a sign? I thought you did have a sign.
No, this is the building next to.
Oh, the other building!
Yeah.
This is the one next to the.
Oh, I thought you were talking about.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, you already got a sign, what are you doing? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, it's a new, it's a new building, that's.
Convenience D and the liquor store.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Continue, I'm sorry.
Granting the variance to do substantial justice because it will allow St. Joseph Medical Center, family practice, to properly identify itself in its new Merrimack location while also providing wayfinding signage to the public. Unnecessary hardship. No fair and substantial relationship.
You skipped number four.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
For the following reasons, the values of surrounding property will not be diminished. Surrounding properties are commercial in nature. Clean, clear, attractive signage positively affects the surrounding properties.
Number five?
Okay, unnecessary hardship. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public's purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because the setback of the St. Joseph Medical Center family practice from Dobson Way and beyond will make it difficult for motorists to easily locate this property. The Merrimack sign ordinance does not speak to building faces which are unique, unique due to their setback or orientation to the main thoroughfares.
Alright, number two?
The proposed use is a reasonable one because the proposal is neither imposing nor overpowering. The proposed sign is to scale with our client's north elevation and is a positive proposal for this site.
Do you guys feel you met the hardship? Okay, so you don't need to read the next section.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions? It looks like it's just a pretty standard, you're looking just to get the sign in the front. Is it about the same size as the convenient medical one that's there right now?
Actually, it's about fifty square feet smaller.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's a smaller sign.
Illuminated, obviously, right?
Correct. This is illuminated in such a way that their black letters during the day and night they illuminate white. And the illumination isn't, won't be as bright as Convenient MD because blue is not a really typically bright letter. And the black lighting white at night tends to be a little bit more muted white at night.
Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Okay, and I will go with, I'll open this up for public discussion. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor? Is there anybody here that would like to speak against? Close the public discussion. Any other questions or comments for the gentleman before us this evening? Okay, now I'm gonna close the public hearing and open it up to discussion of the Board. Anybody have any questions? Anybody, any points you want to discuss, anything? Okay.
I think it makes sense.
Alright, if that's the case, then do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to the variance, I mean, to the variance, yeah, to the variance under section seventeen point one zero point four of the zoning ordinance to permit a hundred twenty-six point two-five aluminum wall sign, whereas eighty-five point thirty is allowed. The parcel is located at Fort Dobson Way in the C2 General Commercial and Aquafire Conservation District, tax map M three D lot zero zero three zero zero three zero two, case 2015 dash thirty-seven.
I got a second from Lenny, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four, zero, zero. You're good to go?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Oh, just so you know, you have thirty days till somebody can appeal within thirty days, so if you proceed before the thirty days, it is at your own risk. Yeah, thank you. Alright, next, Patricia M. Penico, Esquire or Barrough, PA, petitioner and Carol Maggio Valley View Revocable Trust, equitable waiver of dimensional requirements under section three point zero two A of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing front stoop along the front residence of a forty-seven foot, residence forty-seven feet from the front line, front property line, whereas fifty feet is required. The parcel is located at fifteen Valley View Drive in the R Residential District, tax map five C lot one four two, case number 2015 dash thirty-eight. Before we proceed, could you stand up to be sworn in because you weren't here? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God?
I do.
Great. If you could give us just a quick, like that idea, it's a quick twenty-five word or less, what we're, what we're looking to do?
Well, that's hard.
You got a big audience back there, so don't be intimidated, and.
It's my first time.
And then we get into the points of law.
The, first of all, I'm pinch hitting tonight for Pat Pansiaco. She couldn't be here, so I found out a short while ago that I was going to be here this evening.
Steve, is your, is your mic on?
Yes, I believe it is, Tony. The parcel that's in front of you tonight has a recently constructed home on it on Valley View Drive. Back in middle of the month of October, my office went out to do a certified as-built as required by the Building Department for issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And at that time, we learned that a stoop that the builder had constructed on the front of the house, the concrete step, or stone step, that shows on the as-built is a porch extended over the front yard setback by a little under three feet. One corner is two point nine feet encroachment, the other is two point eight feet. The, as Attorney Pansiaco indicated in her application, that step and the associated stoop were not a part of the originally planned construction, but because of site grading, it's a very steep lot. It was added after the fact, and apparently the builder failed to recognize that the relationship. We'd actually laid out the house proper where it was situated because it was a tight piece of construction to begin with. And when he elected to add the step, he put a stoop above it, and there's a columns, one each corner that come down, so hence the need to be here. Attorney Pansiaco filed an application with the Community Development Department on October thirteenth, seeking an equitable waiver. The criteria for equitable waiver are indicated on the application. In this particular instance, it's not a violation that has existed for ten years or more, so we skip to an explanation of how the non-conformity was discovered after the structure was substantially completed. In this particular case, Attorney Pansiaco points out that the encroachment of the front porch, which really is stoop, was discovered after a certified plot plan was completed. The porch was not completed until the final grading was completed, which gave rise to the need for an additional step at the end of the finished walkway. These were not completed until after the structure was substantially constructed. Continuing, the criterion require that the violation not, be an outcome that was not an ignorance of law, failure to inquire, obfuscation, misrepresentation, or bad faith, but instead caused by either a good faith error in measurement or calculation made by an owner or owner's agent, or by an error in ordinance interpretation or applicability made by a municipal official in the process of issuing a permit over which that official had authority. In this particular case, the certified plot plan, which shows the main structure complies with the front setback requirement. The applicant made a good faith error in calculating the required stairs, but needed to provide the platform to keep grade of walkway flatter. Basically, as I said at the outset, this front entrance door was originally supposed to come out onto a yay-by-yay platform without steps. There'd be one step from the first floor of the house down onto the step, and then it was going to be flat from that point outward. Because of the grading in that area, apparently the builder added a step, which, and because of that, added the covering that extends off the building, the stoop, if you will, and the columns didn't look out of place. And it resulted in what, what occurred here. Secondly, to offer an explanation of how the physical and dimensional violation does not constitute a public or private nuisance, yeah?
Can I ask a question on that? On the first one? Would there be any, anything preventing the builder from, instead of building a three-by-five stoop, whatever it is he put there, could he put just a single step?
He could have.
And, and this would have accomplished it and not needed, and it could be changed now to accomplish that?
Presumably, you could take the stoop off.
Right.
Again, it wasn't, it wasn't part of the original construction. It was added after the fact, from what I understand. I wasn't involved in the building, obviously. But when he came to realize that.
No, I understand that, I just, you could remove the stoop and just put a single step, and then you wouldn't be encroaching on a setback.
I mean, you'd keep the step, I guess, because this.
Yeah, you'd need the step.
But what makes it a structure is the fact that there's a column goes up and then the.
Well, I'd have to, that'd have to come out too.
Yeah, yeah.
But it could be accomplished with a single step, rather than a big stoop.
Yeah. I'm not sure about how the grade difference, because it would, I mean, obviously, there would be two risers there today.
Well, you've got one riser to a large platform.
Correct.
And then a short riser to the front door.
Right, so the, about sixteen inches or so.
So if you make that large stoop, large platform, just a single step.
Bring the grade to it.
Then you would be.
That was what the initial construction was intended to be.
Yeah.
How Mike got to the point of making this judgment, I have no idea. I haven't talked to him.
Okay.
I know that he turned quite white when we explained to him that he had an issue, so.
Okay, okay.
So anyways, continuing with the second criterion, explain how the physical or dimensional violation does not constitute a public or private nuisance, nor diminish the value of the property in the area, nor interfere or adversely affect any present or permissible uses of any such property. In this case, Attorney Pansiaco's response was that this modest reduction in the front setback requirement for an additional front stair will not be a public or private nuisance, and is far outweighed by the added safety provided by additional stair and will have no impact on the property's use or impact on other properties in the area. And it's pretty obvious. And third, explain how the cost of correction far outweighs any benefit to be gained. To correct the error would require the house to be relocated toward the rear of the property. This would not be cost-effective, nor provide any additional public benefit.
Couldn't, couldn't they, I mean, couldn't, I mean, instead of relocating the whole entire house, could you conceivably just eliminate that whole porch?
That's what I said, yeah.
I would say yes. You know, in this particular instance, to take up the grade, I hadn't been out there until earlier today when I found out that I was pinch hitting tonight, so I went out and actually took a look at it myself. Obviously, others from my office have been out there when they did the survey to catch the mistake to begin with. I was thinking the same thing as Lynn, to some extent, at least with the stair. The driveway is paved. Landscaping is pretty much there. Given the, I guess, genesis of the error on the builder's part, you know, going back to that third criteria, the cost of correction, obviously, to take the stoop off, to move the stair for, you know, that small of an incursion, there's a practicality issue there. I also point out that that lot, where the stoop is and where the stair is, has a, I can tell you what the vertical difference between the street is. So it's not only, you know, from a horizontal standpoint, it's under three foot of difference, but, you know, the grade of the sill is at one thirty, and the grade of the street below it is in the one-ten, so there's a twenty-foot grade difference there. So it, your line of sight, you're really not noticing, it doesn't look weird. It doesn't look like it projects out further. And again, the face of the building itself is compliant along the front end.
Any other questions or comments?
Actually, actually, I think by putting the stoop there with the overhang adds to the visual, or a positive visual to the building. And also, from a safety point of view, you're keeping people coming in and out of the weather if they're standing in front of the door, so.
I understood from Pat, again, I haven't talked to Mike, that the stoop got added when he realized he was gonna have a stair for that exact purpose.
There's no other questions or comments? Is there anybody, I'll open this up to the public, is there anybody out there that wants to speak in favor of this petition? Anybody that wants to speak against this petition? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Any discussions from the Board on this?
I'll call this.
I, I mean, I kinda agree with you.
It's obvious from the as-built certified plot plan that they had accounted for something because they set the building back fifty-three plus feet. But site conditions dictated a minor field change. It's a front step and a little roof over it, it's not part of the living and dwelling. It's, to me, it's.
Well, but it's still an encroachment, so.
They tried to get there.
Yep, yep.
Intentionally.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with what they've done.
Come out of the way you did.
Tony, go ahead.
Well, I think it's more a problem to do reconstruction than just to leave it where it is. That's my opinion.
Okay, I guess, I, I guess, I mean, I, I mean, I look at it as like, okay, it's, it's three feet. I mean, and it looked like, you know, I just, I don't, I just don't like the wording of number three as far as relocating a house, because I don't think you really have to relocate the house. I think, you know, it's not as major as that, that's the only, I mean, I, I know what you're saying, but I don't think you have to relocate the whole house.
I'll let, let Pat know that she.
She pushed herself.
Yeah, that's, I think it's a little.
And you folks know Pat, right?
And it, we didn't buy it.
Okay, I'll just let her know that.
So.
Interestingly, her and her husband used to be builders.
But I, but I think the positive of leaving it there far outweighs the negative of.
It's aesthetics.
Making, making the changes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, then, with that being said, it sounds like I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move that we grant the equitable waiver of dimensional requirements under section three point oh two A of the zoning ordinance to permit an existing front stoop along the front of a residence forty-seven feet from the front property line, whereas fifty feet is required. The parcel is located at fifteen Valley View Drive in the R Residential District, tax map five C lot one forty-two, case 2015 hyphen thirty-eight.
Second. Second, it's on. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Four, zero, it's approved?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you got thirty days.
Yeah, move the house.
Somebody else is, I don't know, I'm going home.
Move the house.
Thank you very much.
Not a problem, thank you. I take it you're here for Volt?
Aye.
Okay, I forgot to mention before the last hearing, and I need to mention, I apologize. We do not have a full Board tonight, so you, you can, you can put off the petition to waive a full Board, we're actually missing two members, or you can be heard tonight. If your petition ends in a two-two, two yes, two no, it fails. So you're gonna need, you would need to get majority, which would be three positives towards the petition. So if you, so your chances, obviously, with the bigger Board is, you know, you have a better, better chance. So because we're, we're short by two, you have the option to either have, be heard tonight or push it off to, to a future meeting when we have a larger Board.
I would like to be heard tonight.
Okay, so then we will be hearing Hank Balch of Green Bear Signs and Graphics LLC, petitioner and Volt Motor Storage Owner, variance under section seventeen point ten point three of the zoning ordinance to permit an additional hundred sixty square foot ground sign, whereas sixty-three, whereas a sixty-three square foot ground sign was permitted at five hundred twenty-six Daniel Webster Highway in 2014. The parcel is located at five hundred twenty-six Daniel Webster Highway in the C2 General Commercial and Aquafire Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area, tax map five D dash two lot zero zero one, case number 2015 point dash thirty-nine. Did you sign in?
I did.
Okay, sign in, please.
I have to raise this right hand.
I got, wow, you guys keep me on my toes tonight. And could you stand?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the whole truth, nothing but truth, so help you God?
I do.
Alright, just please state your name, and if you could give us kind of a quick twenty-five word or less, what we're looking for here, and then get into the points of law, that'd be great.
Okay, my name is Hank Balch, I'm the owner-operator of Green Bear Signs in Manchester, New Hampshire, and I'm here to ask the Board for a variance for additional signage above the maximum allowed for this particular business on DW Highway.
Alright, if you could just get into the five points that you had stated.
Okay.
And we're just gonna stop between each one in case there's any questions.
And I apologize, I recently was diagnosed with Lyme, so I have a tough time speaking, so if you just bear with me, I'll try to get through this as best as possible.
If you, if you'd like, we can have somebody read this in for you if you'd prefer, and just you can answer questions.
If that would be, that would be great.
Would that be, is that okay from the Board?
Sure.
If I, if I read in the responses?
Sure.
Okay, just, you just field questions that we may have?
Absolutely.
Dylan, is there any problem with that?
Uh, slide one.
I'll read right off the page, alright. So, number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest.
Um, so, uh, number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Granting interest, granting, granting variance, in fact, would be beneficial to public interest. The people would know what business was now occu- occupying that location.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Bulch?
Yeah, there's, there's a sign there now, correct?
That there is.
And the people see it and they know what's going down?
I believe they do. The reason for this, in a nutshell, is that, um, the property is in a unique situation where both, uh, the Everett Turnpike and DW Highway pass the property. Uh, Mr. Morgan would like to get that additional flow of traffic, knowing that his business is here in Merrimack.
Okay, so the sign is gonna be facing the highway.
That's correct. It would not be facing DW as the one is now. It would be facing the Everett Turnpike.
Number two, are there any other questions?
Yep.
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because the site now has an additional warehouse, two hundred feet by two hundred twenty feet, requested additional si- sign, and requested additional signage is for that structure. Um, I didn't seem to be outlined in the initial petition that was for that structure. See, it, it seems like it's all just, it's all one property, right?
Right, there is an additional warehouse, uh, for the same business.
Okay.
That, that warehouse is for the same purposes, the other buildings on the warehouse, on the site.
Originally, if you were familiar with the Zeiler complex, there were two warehouses. Um, and, uh, they have been completely revamped. And because of the increased, um, need for that storage that Mr. Morgan is providing, he has opted to use the rest of the property behind those two, um, uh, existing warehouses and is now in full construction of a new warehouse, which you're probably all aware of.
But it's all part of the same business.
But it is all part of the exact same business, yes.
Okay.
Number three, uh, granting the variance would do substantial justice because advertising equals dollars and dollars spent at Merrimack Business means dollars for Merrimack Town coffers. Anybody?
If I might just have a moment here. I, I am not an employee of Mr. Morgan's, I merely his sign guy.
Sure.
And I've worked for him for several years now. I know for a fact that Mr. Morgan has taken dilapidated, rundown warehouse situation buildings and turned them into viable businesses.
No question.
And this is a, a win-win for Merrimack. That building, you know, has been sitting there for nearly a decade. Um, shrubs, you know, it, it looked terrible. And if you drive by now, if you haven't dri- driven by, I, I encourage you to take a look at what has been done to that property. And that is all a reflection to your town now, so...
No, I, 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 I agree. Um, but, I mean, that being said, there's, there's a lot of businesses, uh, along that, that have gone through rehab and, and have, um, I, I mean, I don't know if it's substantial justice. I think it's a, so, I think that might be a little strong in, in, in the way that it kinda has that phrase there, because there are quite a few buildings, uh, along the, uh, Everett Turnpike that have been rehabbed over the last five, six years. Um, I mean, and, and, and...
But I noticed...
In their variances, that was, it was never kinda stated in that way, you know, talking about Merrimack's coffers. I mean, it's, I think it's, it's just people are redoing the, you know, there's a lot of traffic, it's, it's a good road, so...
Wouldn't that add to your tax revenue to have a business that was viable in, in being able to tax, uh, more square footage on a property with the buildings? Does it, that help you?
We, we have, we have that now.
Mm-hmm.
Having the additional signage doesn't add to the town's coffers.
Mm-hmm.
Then that's, that's why I was saying that.
I, I see, okay.
There's no question that what he's done in that facility is immense. No question at all.
But the, we're not questioning the facility, we're questioning the signage.
Mm-hmm.
And, and...
Okay.
For the following reasons, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished. There are no residential properties that can view the proposed sign, only traffic on the Everett Highway, which is the target viewer wanted. Any questions?
Does the state have any guidelines as far as billboards and signage along the, the Everett? I know there, there is next to none there.
Not that I'm aware of, but, um, I did let them know that DOT should be contacted as well.
Okay.
For any guidance that they might have in that respect.
Okay.
Okay, unnecessary hardship. Uh, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because, one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because due to its location, the placement of the requested sign is only viewable from traffic on the Everett Turnpike, on the Everett Turnpike, and would cause hardship if the source of business was ignored.
Questions on that?
Uh, I'm not sure I see the hardship there. Um, from what I understand, the, the building is, is fully occupied now, what he's got, which is why he's looking for, why he's building the additional warehouse?
That is correct, from my understanding, yes.
And he's been able to fill those buildings with just the signage that he has?
That's correct.
Okay.
Number two, the proposed use is reasonable one because requested additional signage helps draw in additional customers, resulting in the higher revenues, therefore higher, therefore higher taxes, revenues, tax revenues for the town of Merrimack.
Anybody?
And since there was a question on the first one, I am gonna read B. Um, if the criterion, subparagraph A, are not established, explain how the unnecessary hardship will be deemed, uh, it to exist if and only if, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from the properties in that, in the area, the property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance, and a variance is therefore necessary to enable the reasonable use of the property. Due to the layout of this property, the, the, this location for the proposed additional signage fits with the target market of potential clients that pass by the Everett Turnpike side of five twenty-six Daniel Webster Highway.
Any questions, concerns? Anything from Mr. Bulch? Uh, I'll open this up to the public, is there anybody out there that would like to speak in favor? I have to do that. Anybody out there that would like to speak against? Okay, close the public. Um, any final comments before I close the public hearing? Um, all right, then I'll close the public hearing and open it up to discussion on the board. Um, I, I personally, I don't, I don't, I don't see the hardship. Um, and, um, I certainly don't see, um, the substantial justice as it relates to the sign, especially if he's been able to occupy a majority of the building, just with the signage he has. The other thing is, is that, uh, understanding that, you know, wanted advertising get out there, but right now, there's a sixty-foot square foot sign on property, correct, right now?
Yes.
So, you know, you're, you're looking to literally add another hundred sixty square feet for a sign, is a very large sign, to put on the side of the highway, which I'm surprised that, you know, well, that's, that, I, I'm not gonna get into the whole DOT thing, but that's a, that's a big request. It's not like we're asking to put an extra, you know, you know, small sign on a building or, or, or something on the building, we're asking for a very large sign.
I, I can understand that, but when, when you have viewability of a sign, distance, as you can imagine, plays a big part. And from the highway where you can view the sign, that will not look like a very big sign. And, and I understand that. And to make a four-by-eight sign and stick it out there in the back, it would be useless. Nobody would see it. You know, the whole purpose of the sign being large is so that it draws attention to the business. And I was going to ask for two hundred square feet, but I said, you know, we can make this work like within these parameters and have this, you know, honestly, from the highway, that sign will not look like a hundred and sixty-eight square feet. It will look like, you know, something that will be recognizable, but not grotesquely large.
Okay.
Um, I kinda agree. I don't see the, uh, justice in this or the hardship. Uh, you, you, that, that building, that business is packed now. In fact, I was there the other day, uh, uh, another, another, uh, similar question that the, the owner came to us and we granted him, and there was a standing line, I mean, there was a list there, you know, just in case somebody leaves, they can put somebody in there, the place was packed. So as one, I, I don't, I don't see the justice in that, and I don't see the hardship in that. I just don't see it.
And there are other businesses in Merrimack that I also border the back end to the, to the Turnpike, and, um, they're not, I mean, they, they don't seem to, you know, I, maybe they just haven't requested it, but I mean, I haven't heard anything like that from the other businesses, so...
I, I don't have a problem with the size of the sign, the, the size makes sense, but I do have a problem with the additional sign. I don't think there's any need for it. Um, I think the sign that's there, I think the, the building itself, um, makes itself evidence what's, what's there, and word of mouth around town and the surrounding towns has, uh, anybody in the, the RV industry knows they're there, knows they have a good facility, um, and are recommending their customers to come there, so I just don't see the need for a sign on the highway.
Lenny?
Yeah. This is a multi-building law. The sign that's being proposed is targeting the Turnpike, which is a high-speed highway. It will not be visible from anywheres except that highway. The size of the sign, to some extent, is dictated by the speed of the road that it's facing to allow people to be able to read it.
Yeah.
Um, it seems reasonable to me.
Okay.
That the sign out on Route three is appropriately sized for that speed zone of traffic.
Mm-hmm.
But this is a completely different animal out on a sixty-five mile an hour road.
And I, and I don't disagree with that. I think that my concern is obviously the hardship, is, is one and two. Number two, he talks about the taxes. Um, it's, you, people are ta- it's a flat tax rate in Merrimack, it's not assessed value, so one million, ten million, doesn't matter. I mean, the taxes are taxes. So, I mean, I, I, but I, I, I understand, I understand what he, what, I think what he might be trying to say, but I, again, when I'm looking at the, at the hardship aspect of it, I don't, I don't see it for number one, and I don't see it for number two of, uh, of the, um, of, 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 of that petition. Um, that, that, that's my take on it, I mean, I'll, I'll leave it to the board.
I agree with Lenny, I understand what he's saying. Um, but I look at the hardship point of this, and if he doesn't have that sign, he's still gonna fill that, that third warehouse. He's gonna have just as many people waiting in line for an empty spot. That, that warehouse is gonna be filled regardless of whether that sign is there. So I think denying the sign is not a hardship for him.
Fair enough. Do you hear a motion?
You want a motion?
Yes.
I don't know if I can do this right or not, but, um, uh, I move that we deny the request for variance under section seventeen point ten point three of the zoning ordinance to permit an additional sixteen square, sixteen hundred square foot, no, hundred and sixty square foot, excuse me, ground sign, whereas a sixty-three square foot ground sign was permitted at five twenty-six DW Highway in two thousand fourteen. Parcels located in five twenty-six DW Highway in the C-two general commercial and aquifer conservation districts and wellhead protection area. Tax Map five D hyphen two, Lot zero-zero-one, Case two thousand fifteen hyphen thirty-nine. Based on the fact that they already have an existing ground sign and the, and I do not believe they made a compelling case to justify hard, the hardship exists due to the fact that the facility, um, seems to be at capacity and will continue to be at capacity when the third building is completed.
Second. All in favor of denial of variance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Variance, variance is denied.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You can, you, you can, you can appeal, if, 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 work with the community development group. All right. So, next up. Um, discussion of possible action, uh, action regarding other items of concern. Jillian? Anything?
I don't have anything right now.
Wow, all right.
Senate Bill one forty-six, is it?
Sounds right.
I think, um, is going to be of interest to us, um, regarding ADUs.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, all right.
What's the, what's the new, what's, I, what's the...
Um, the proposal is to make an ADU the right of any single-family dwelling to have, so that you're no, you're no, no longer gonna require variances in order to get an ADU.
Isn't it so that it's not required to be family either?
That's part of it.
Yeah.
One, one of the units, either the ADU or the original dwelling, has to be owner-occupied. And the additional unit can be occupied by anyone, not necessarily a family member.
So what stops it from having a bunch of apartments popping up all over the place?
Well, they have to be owner-occupied. So you could not have one person coming in and buying four or five different homes and putting an ADU on all of them, because it has to be owner-occupied.
Okay.
Um, it also would allow for... It also, um, allows for, for instance, um, I've got a big house, my kids are gone, I don't need the big house. One end of my house would be perfectly suited for an ADU. Um, I could move into that end of it, and I could rent the big house to a young family that would like to move into town, and it gives them affordable housing, and it gives me kids around and somebody to take care of the lawn, and, um, so you've got that possibility. Um, there's any number of, of reasons that, that they've gone through this, and they've... I think they've crafted the law well. Um, it's gonna relieve this board of a lot of mundane hearings that we've had to do.
Who's the senator?
Who's the?
Who's the, uh...
The sponsor?
Yeah.
I'd have to go back and look. Um, but there's been quite a, quite a series of committee hearings. Um, I'm trying to think of the, the woman that's the, I believe she's Chair of Municipal and County Government in the House, was on it, and I had a chance to talk to her this morning. Um, it's just something we should, we should take a look at. I believe community development has been tracking it.
Tim has been...
Yep, yeah.
How does the staff feel about that?
I think it makes sense, um, for a lot of different reasons. I don't know if it's appropriate to get into them here, but I think it makes sense.
Yeah. It's just something to, to be aware that it's coming and, and will take a lot of the, the pressure off of us to do our real jobs instead of dealing with ADUs all the time.
Okay. Um, I actually had, well, that's interesting, I, I, that, that's...
They're also, they're also not limited in size, and they're also...
So you could go fifty-fifty in a house?
Yep.
Wow.
And they're also not limited in the number of bedrooms.
So you, you could basically have somebody make an apartment out of a house?
Yep.
This is just, uh, today was just a workshop, but not an exec session?
No, it's, um, I, I don't know that it's gone to exec yet.
Okay.
Although, yeah, it may have, because we've got an eleven-two vote, I believe. I think that may have been the exec se- section. I'm, I'm not sure, Tony, I'm just...
Okay.
I, I didn't have the details with me, I just know it's coming along, and it's something that, that pertains to what we do. So just thought you'd be interested.
Okay. Um, okay, that's cool. Uh, I actually had a quick question. Um, November, December, are the, how are they shaping up for meetings, or are we doing a December meeting this year?
We have one on schedule.
We do? Okay. Starts to thin out a little bit this time of year, that's why I was asking if we have a lot on the...
Uh, December twenty-eighth.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah.
All right, and, uh, I guess next would be approval of minutes?
I move we approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and before the last part, Fran, if you're watching, I hope you get well soon, we miss you.
Yep. Yep.
And...
I'm sure she's watching.
And Rich, if you're watching, we miss you too. Come back soon. Tony, do the honors.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome.